Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty three. School committee meeting located here at Tingsboro High School. These meetings are audio and video recorded. I officially call the meeting to order. My name is Anthony Tinnarello. We will start with introductions to my.
Barry Teague, student representative.
Jeff Boe.
Becky Stanton.
Good evening, Joe Messina, business administrator.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Dustine Puma.
And Rob Mullin.
At this time, I ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the September fifth, twenty twenty three school committee minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero zero. Citizens time? Seeing none. Correspondents?
I know this time is true.
Personnel, Ms. Torres has requested a maternity leave due in January, so good luck to her and her family. Share the success.
Alright, so the school year is underway and at the elementary school, uh, the school is already started. Uh, the energy and excitement for learning and having fun is felt throughout the building. Our breakfast program has had a great success with over two hundred fifty students accessing breakfast daily. We are excited to welcome our families to TA- TES this Thursday, September twenty first. The format for our open house is a meet and greet with opportunities for students to show off their classrooms, work, and their school. Our students take the lead on this night. Recently, we kicked off our second annual TES Stripes Walkathon. This is a fun and healthy way to raise money for the students and staff of TES. We have teamed up with Get Moving to make this event fun and profitable with online mobile friendly technology. All money, all money raised will help supplement the cost of school events and assemblies, our stripes core values and materials to enhance our classroom. Your participation and support are greatly appreciated. Wednesday, October eighteenth is a big day as we look forward to presenting at the next school committee meeting on October third. At the middle school, the middle school will be holding a presentation later in this meeting and that will be their update. Uh, for the high school, congratulations to our newly elected class officers. Homecoming planning is now underway. T-shirt designs are being developed and class banners will begin this week. After-school clubs have begun to meet, including student council and the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Club. Open house will be taking place on Thursday, September twenty eighth. Parents and guardians will follow their child's schedule to start the night and can have individual meetings after if necessary. Congratulations to September Students of the Month, Barry Teague, Brooke Kavanaugh, Kendall Times, and Bill Entroda. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
It's so uncomfortable having to read it for yourself, Barb. I'm so hard on that. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And did you just write that in or was it actually that? Um, thank you, Barb. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to take nine B out of, or eight B out of order. No, nine B, I was correct. Nine A.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take nine A out of order.
I'd second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero zero. Dr. Flanagan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Paul is here with Ms. Slattery and some friends from Tingsboro Middle School. And this is kind of the highlight every year is when we get students in front of the committee to talk about the start of the school year and exciting things. And I, I also like it when they're put on the spot by the school members and ask questions. So hopefully we come up with some good questions as we go. So, Mr. Paul, would you like to do an intro or how are we gonna go from here?
So, yeah, I just wanna say.
Just to microphone if you can.
Six wonderful students have come to give you a little presentation on how things have been going so far at the middle school. And I'll let them introduce themselves as they go along.
Hello, my name is Noah Griffin. I'm in eighth grade.
And my name is Skylafai and I'm also in eighth grade.
And during our just over two years here at TMS and doing student council, we've done a lot more every year, but today we are just here to give you an update of recent things that have been going on. As you know, we operate on A-day, B-day schedule.
This year, there is one team in sixth grade, one team in eighth grade, but there are still two teams in eighth grade, in seventh grade due to the biggest amount of students. We're not only here representing student council, but also the students of TMS.
We have been dealing with the construction every day. There are always noises outside our windows and the building shakes in areas where the construction is closer. And due to this construction, we have, we have to cross the road and walk on a closed-off path to get to our buses after school.
This year, we are having breakfast every morning. They serve honeybuns, muffins, cereal, and more. We, we get a lot of options to choose from. We have three options every day. We also have to take a fruit and a milk. The students seem to really like the breakfast so far.
Hi, I'm Caleb. I am in seventh grader. I'm.
Hi, I'm Kristen DeShane and I'm in the eighth grade now. I want to talk about this year's hate, heat wave. Out of the three years I've been here, this has been the worst by, by far. It was so hot. Students and teachers had to find new ways to stay cool. For example, we would use container lids, paper fans, handheld fans, and other devices to cool down. As you can see, our students had many options about the heat wave, or many opinions about the heat wave, and I'll let you read them now. But we all survived and we're having a much better week.
Hi, I'm Caleb. I'm a seventh grader here at TMS. And I'm gonna go over, uh, the, like, the kind of whole way that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade runs. Um, as a former sixth grader, um, middle school can be a big change. Um, when going into middle school, it changes the whole way you, the school runs, the schedule, and basically what classes you have in the work. So, um, a change in middle school will be like, um, finding your classrooms. You'll have a little bit more independency finding your classrooms and a little bit more things. Um, and yeah, that's it for sixth grade. Um, I'm a seventh grader, so I have personally found it to be easier becoming, um, than becoming a sixth grader because seventh grade, you understand how the school works and runs. So you know where your classes are, you know what to do, when to do it. And, um, you understand more about how everybody is, how the grades work, and yeah. And for my colleagues in eighth grade, um, I've found that work gets harder, but the teachers are there to help you through every twist and turn that comes their way. Um, um, eighth grade is a role model to the whole school because they are the highest grade and, um, have been there for the longest. Um, they understand how school works fully and all what happens there. Um, also, uh, the eighth graders are excited, um, or nervous to move up into high school. And a lot of eighth graders are excited to see, um, get to go to like Washington DC in their whale watching trip at the end of the year.
So I said I would do this one. Um, as an eighth grade parent, or actually as a middle school parent, you'll be receiving an email each week from your student and they're gonna tell you a little bit about what they're proud of that's happened in school or things that are coming up for the upcoming week, things that they could use some help at home from, uh, also what they're finding to get easier, but also to let you know at home what they might be missing and what they need to catch up on. Each week, they'll send an email to their parent and their advisor and our goal is to try to create that nice connection between home and school, between parents and teachers.
Hi, I'm Chloe Collins and I'm in eighth grade. I have been doing student council all three years that I've been a student at TMS. Every year, we do things to try to make our school a better place for students and teachers. For example, we do things like community service to help TMS and the local community. Some other things we do are school events like field day, movie nights, and blanket drives. We try to improve the quality of school for kids and teachers with all we do.
I'm Alexis DeShane and I'm in eighth grader. I've been in student council for three years now and we've done so many fun activities, but here are some of the most popular events. Every year, multiple spirit weeks take place. During spirit week, students are given a theme each day to dress up. This turns into a competition between each grade to see which grade has the most participants. This year, the first spirit week will take place October sixteenth to the twentieth. Each year, we host a blanket drive. Students will bring in fabrics to make blankets, which Mrs. Cassie will then donate. These blankets are brought to policemen, firemen, and the homeless. Student council sets a March Madness every year in the month of March. Kids create teams for dodgeball and basketball, then compete in tournaments. The winners of dodgeball get to play against the teachers and even some high schoolers. Each year on Earth Day, a group of students in student council are picked to go around Tingsboro and pick up trash. Sometimes even Mr. Holgate will take them to get ice cream at Sullivan's.
So, that's our, that's our presentation. We wanted to leave you some time to ask a lot of questions, uh, if you have them. And, uh, now they're done and they're not as nervous, so the people are free to wish you out of the set.
Thank you, guys. Great presentation, but I'll open it up to the group.
So, go ahead.
Alright. What are you most looking forward to for the year?
I can start. Um, I'm definitely looking forward to Washington DC because I feel like that will be something new 'cause trips with, uh, your class or just your grade are still not something you've done before, of course, with COVID and just being younger. And whale watching also just seems incredibly fun to me. Um, yeah. Do you like continue?
I'm also looking forward to the Washington DC trip 'cause I think it'll be new and cool to go on a trip without your parents.
Agreed.
Um.
That's all. Um, I'm excited for the year to go on with after-school events and, uh, field trips, of course. Uh, the seventh grade is going on the Botofored trip and a Christmas caroling and a hiking one. So I'm excited to see what happens.
I think all the eighth graders are very excited for the eighth grade trip, as Skylar said. Um, and just being the, like, most, like, the oldest person in school, it's really cool to be able to, like, have people looking up to you, which I find pretty cool.
I am definitely most excited for the DC trip. I think it'll be really fun to get away from the school and home and go to a new place with all your friends and, um, and your teachers and classmates.
I think I'm most excited for March Madness, actually, because, um, I love the dodgeball. Um, especially last year, I was a seven, when I was a seventh grader, we, it was so, like, it was so exciting, like, everybody was, like, cheering for you 'cause we, we ended up beating all of the eighth graders and the teachers and it's just so much excitement and the energy is very fun.
When it comes to spirit week, the eighth grade has a period, uh,
Moon street, yeah.
We can't lose to the siblings.
So you guys survived the, uh, two-day heatwave, huh?
Yes.
So now that you got through it, would you rather have had those two days off or the two days off in June and get out earlier?
Two days off. I don't care what anyone else says. It was the worst
It was probably.
week of my entire life. In the three years, in the three years that we've been in the middle school, it's definitely by far the hottest. Yes. I hadn't noticed the heat wave any other year until now. That's how bad it was.
Was there anywhere in the building that you guys could escape to and have a little bit of air conditioning?
The STEM room and the art room.
I didn't, I.
The art room.
I wasn't supposed to go there.
Yeah.
Those are like the three main rooms that are still like classrooms, classrooms that have what we see, so. Mostly the last of the alumni.
So there wasn't any place that you guys could even, like, move your class to?
No.
Nope. Not really.
Eighth grade went into the auditorium, which was cooler, and the cafeteria was cooler than upstairs, but upstairs was pretty tough.
Right, and students were sitting against the, the stake of the wall, so it was cooler against the floor of the walls. Where did you find? Were you to stay cool?
Trying to use anything to stay cool.
Yeah, a lot of us sharing portable fans, hand fans.
So maybe a half day would have been okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or maybe not.
Much, that would have been much better than what we had.
So, eighth graders, what do you think you'll miss most about TMS?
Just the teachers have been so generally lovely, um, in my time here or in our time here. And a lot of the events, I think I'll miss a lot, but I know there's gonna be a lot of, uh, not, uh, cool things that are gonna go on at the high school as well.
I entirely agree. Thank you. Um, I agree. It's just to be able to be in eighth grade is just kinda cool.
I think I'll miss the teachers the most. I feel like they've made, like, such a big impact with, like, school and, like, they're such, like, good helpers with us.
Um, I'll definitely miss, like, the classes and my teachers and all the fun events that we get to do.
Um, is there a favorite subject that you guys have?
ELA. Also arts.
Yeah.
Is she in for the Slatteries?
Yeah. No, we still love you. Yeah. I'd say definitely ELA for me is an avid reader and writer, but also art is definitely one of my funnest classes.
What do you like to read?
Uh, definitely more young adult and fantasy and not much of a adult thing.
For the eighth graders, um, how do you feel about having one team this year versus having two teams in prior years?
I feel a lot better about it 'cause it feel like it prepares you for high school a lot more and it, it honestly does feel easier than last year. I don't really know why, but it just feels much easier.
I like how you can, like, still, like, be in some of the same classes with your friends and not have to be separated by a team.
Yeah. Um, I just think it's nice to be able to have, be more open. So like, you're not, like, strictly strict to the two teams and you see your friends at, like, lunch or UAs and you get to actually be with friends in class, which is also nicer 'cause you kind of have a wider chance of being friends with them. And so, like, for example, I, my, Skylar and Noah were on my team last year and if I had, like, a question about homework, I couldn't be like, oh, hey, what was this? And she was like, I don't really know, 'cause I was not on your team. So it was just nicer this year to be able to ask questions and relate to things as being in the same classes.
Um, I think that I do like it because, um, even though you have different teachers, it's, um, like, cool that you're, like, you get to experience other, from past years, what the two team was like and both what the four team was like.
So that's something we'll have to assess as we go on. As we know, we have a big seventh grade class right now moving up next year, so I'm not sure it's gonna be feasible next year, but it's something that we'll continue to monitor and something that we've done a lo- all along is watch the, really the course, class size and kind of let that drive how the model's gonna be. Uh, no different than when we went from two teams to four to, to four and two years ago. Mr. Chair, I just had a couple of comments. Um, you know, I, I, I love when the students come up and present, but I, I really, I was taking notes here and the things that I like to hear are gaining independence, being role models, giving back to the community, working hard, all great core values. I heard a lot about the fun stuff that we do in middle school, which is all well and good, but the academic side's important and it needs really important life skills that you'll take with you and hopefully, uh, continue to build upon here at Tingsboro High School. So, great job with this presentation.
Um, thank you guys for coming out this evening. We always say every year that this is, when, when the three schools come and present to us, these are our favorite nights. This is why we do this, um, this for you guys. So thank you. It's not easy to get up and do what you guys just did. There's a lot of adults who couldn't do what the six of you just did. So, uh, be proud of yourself. Congratulations. Enjoy eighth grade for those of you that are coming here next year. And, uh, we apologize for all the noises of the construction out there.
We have, we get to take care of the heat though.
But the new school will have air conditioning.
Yes.
You know, I've been said anything about not being able to enjoy the new school.
Right.
That's true.
No, 'cause we won't be there for it.
We will come back and visit. Absolutely.
We all survived. I have that quote.
And it was our pleasure to be here with you all today.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Great.
You're best.
Nice job. Nice job.
Have a great night.
Thank you too.
I'm doing.
So, back to our regular school subcommittees. We have none at this time.
Uh, just if I can get it on the radar.
Yes.
At our next school committee meeting, before the next school committee meeting, we'd like to have a technology subcommittee meeting. So if Dustine, Jeff are available at six thirty and Danielle already texted, knows about it. Mr. Piper will be leading that meeting. October thirty.
That is the third?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Unfinished business, MSBA update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll jump into the slide deck now. Just to remind you, upcoming meetings, uh, there is a school building committee meeting next Wednesday night. Um, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. The, originally, the twenty seventh was gonna be a joint meeting between the school building committee and the select board, but given timing on some of the bids, uh, it made sense to kind of push things on and I'll explain that to you in a little bit. So the joint meeting will now be on October second. We meet on October third. Uh, October seventeenth is another school committee meeting and then fall town meeting will be on October twenty fourth. There may be another school building committee meeting in there in October. Uh, I don't know exactly what that's gonna look like just yet. And October third, our next school committee meeting, we'll have Tingsboro Elementary School here to present. So if we jump into the first slide, so basically what I wanna do right now, and I'm not gonna go line by line, but I kind of wanna go slide by slide a little bit and kind of give you a, a story or an update about where we are with the school building project. Um, Dave, David Stain and I are project manager from left field. These are his slides and obviously he knows him cold, does a great job with them, but if I can draw your attention, a couple of numbers on this. So, two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, we received, uh, most of our bids. We still had three bids that were outstanding. We hope to get to the ninety-five percent, uh, bid out rate, but we, we weren't able to get there. We're at about ninety percent right now. So when we look at these bids, these are the bids that came in on that time, there were two really telling numbers on this. If you go down to the, near the bottom of the page, you'll see that the plumbing bid came in seven hundred thousand dollars over budget. You go under that, the HVAC bid came in one point three million dollars over budget. So as you look at the ebb and flow of that entire bid package and all the bids at this point, at the ninety-five, ninety percent rate, this bid, these bids alone, about one point five million dollars over budget. We'll go to the next slide. And I'll come back and answer any questions when we get to the end of this. So right now, as we look at it, our ninety percent control budget was seventy point one million. Currently, we're at seventy-one point four million. So right now, we're one point two million dollars over budget for construction costs. If you draw your attention to the bottom right-hand corner, the three bids that were still outstanding are tile and resilient flooring and electrical. Tile and resilient flooring, we, we combined together and we estimate those have come in about eight hundred thousand dollars. Those came in the other day, about eight hundred thousand dollars right on bid. So that's great. Electrical is coming in this Friday. If you look in that box, you will see that we are carrying a million dollars in contingency for any overage that the electrical bill may have. So that's what's currently represented in this budget and brings us to the one point two five overage. If we go to the next slide, this is the breakdown of where we are whole project at this time. This analysis, or this page right here, also works off the assumption that the one point six million dollar Drake water overage is going to be resolved i- in some manner. So this takes that one point six million dollars out. So, given the bids we received at the ninety percent rate, plus the outstanding electrical bill, plus the one million dollars in escalation that we're carrying for that electrical bill, you can see that we are five point four over at this time. If you then go down and bring the spreadsheet down and we talk about the canopy and the softball field or removing the canopy in the softball field and having two options really. We call hypothetical tax option one, hypothetical tax option two. So you can see we're five point five over. Now, we look at any additional funding coming from MSBA, any additional credit rebates, any additional offset money. You follow the spreadsheet down and you can see that right now, as it stands, if the electrical bid comes in on budget, we are eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars over without a softball field and canopy or we're one point six eight over with the softball field canopy. So that would be the new tax impact on residents. Either eight hundred thousand dollars or one point six. This is all hypothetical right now because the electrical bill come, bid comes in on Friday. We still need to see what the impact of that contingency money is and we need to know where the school building committee is gonna go in terms of recommendation to the select board for the October second joint meeting. Because things that could come into play. Do we put some money away to deal with the Drake water issue? Do we include the softball field? Do we include the softball field and the canopy? And these are all conversations that'll play out. So the picture is becoming a little bit more clear. It'll become much more clear after Friday when we know the electrical bid and then when we meet ne- next Wednesday night as a school building committee, we'll be able to say this is exactly where we are, ninety-five percent bought out and this would be the potential impact on the tax rate to the community. Now, for full transparency, if you look at this slide, those bottom tax impact numbers are for the additional borrowing. It's not the total bill. Town meeting already approved eighty-two million dollars worth of, of funding for the, the school project. So that, whatever that tax impact was, happened a year and a half ago at town meeting in May. This, this tax impact that we're talking about here, from seven dollars to thirty-four dollars, is on this new additional borrowing. So we're asking to increase the borrowing capacity for the town and what the tax impact will be. So as we talk about increasing the borrowed capacity, we also recognize there's additional funding coming from the state that's gonna offset that. So the total overage right now is potentially eight hundred thousand dollars to one point six. Hopefully, it's gonna go down significantly from there if we don't need the million dollars in escalation for the electrical bid. So I know that there are numbers out there floating around, four million, six million. That's not where we are. These are the numbers. We'll know more on Friday when the bid comes in and the school building committee will have a full tax impact picture next Wednesday night. So you can't talk about overages in isolation 'cause you have to talk about the additional funding that's coming. It can't be done in isolation. Um, so, so as we look at the whole picture, it's eight hundred to one point six with a tax impact right now of eight dollars to thirty-four dollars depending on what direction the school building committee goes and what the actual numbers are. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Other question?
Sure.
Can you?
I'll do the best I can to answer.
Give private little more detail on the million dollars for the electric bid and how that affects the two tax impacts on the bottom?
Sure. So if, if the electrical bid comes in to the dollar, we have a million dollars to take off the eight hundred thousand or the one point six 'cause that contingency would come right off of there.
So.
Potentially.
I, I understand.
Because, because of the Drake water thing. There, that's still gonna be a, a conversation.
So best case scenario, Drake water goes away. We get four point one from the additional funding from MSBA that the state approved. Electric bid comes in on budget.
Correct.
Maybe even under. So we could potentially be below the, so for six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we could get the softball field and the canopy.
Potentially.
Okay. There's also four hundred and seventy-five thousand in the math save.
That's built in, that's built into that, that's built into that rebate too.
Okay.
Yep.
Dr. Flanagan, for clarity purposes, um, even if this electrical bid comes in under, we still have to go back to town meeting. Is that correct?
We absolutely do because we have to increase the borrowing rate. The, the, the additional funding to support the project comes at a cost. We need to increase our borrowing capacity from eighty-two five million to eighty-eight million dollars. An important line to look on here is if you drop down and you see the anticipated district share. The original district share on this project was fifty-four point five million dollars. These two numbers represent fifty-five point five million or fifty-six point one million or eight hundred thousand or one point six above the original tax impact to the community. That's what we're focusing on. The project went up in cost, but the reimbursement went up from the MSBA as well. So we're gonna increase the borrowing capacity, but we're getting additional revenue from the MSBA. Originally, it was twenty-eight. I think it's up thirty-three or thirty-four now.
So, we need to go to the town. We need to say we need the ability to borrow up to eighty-eight million.
Correct.
We're expecting it to come in at eighty-three?
No, eighty-eight.
Or, but after all the rebates, after all the credits, so Drake water goes away, that four hundred eighty-five thousand, the four point one million. So. Drake water goes away, that four hundred eighty five thousand, the four point one million, so. If all those come through, we don't need to borrow eighty eight million, we just don't borrow the money, it never shows up as a tax burden to the community.
Correct, fifty four point five is what's, it's gonna be a tax burden that was already agreed on, and we need to see what the overage will be above that. But we have to borrow the full amount, we have to get authorization to borrow.
Correct.
The full amount.
For MSBA, we need the ability to borrow.
Correct.
To the eighty eight million, we don't have to borrow anything we don't actually need.
Yep.
We just need the authorization to do so.
Do you know how we're doing compared to other current school projects as far as percentage overage?
No, it's, it's, we, we've had this conversation, we're, we're near the bottom. David's, David's put this slide up before, and we're, we're near the bottom of that, of the thirty districts that went over, we're near the bottom.
And I, I think it's important to note that MSBA and the governor. Signed a million dollar, a hundred million dollars to the thirty current school projects in the state of Massachusetts. And also authorized an additional two hundred and forty eight million dollars in bond, borrowing by the MSB, so. There's been a lot of talk out there in, in the community about mismanaging this project, but uh, um. I invite anybody to come to our meetings, I'm the co-chair for, uh, those who don't know, of the school building committee. Um, come to our meetings, ask your questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them, um, social media. Not necessarily where you're gonna get the facts.
We have an FAQ out there, sorry, Mr. Chair, we have an FAQ out there as well. And once we have already have a draft mailer ready to go, once we get the final numbers, we, you know, instead of, uh, you know, death by a million cuts here, we wanna get one good package. And once we understand what the potential tax impact will be, when we are ninety five percent bid out, that mail will go to everyone in the town with all the facts. As well as with the FAQ and a QR code to additional uh FAQs if you have additional questions. Um, but we're just trying to tell the story tonight, uh, to let you know what's, what's coming out of play, so Joe, you can jump ahead three slides.
Yes, one final.
Yep.
Can you just let us know on Friday, whenever you get the final electric bid, you know, where it comes in?
So, uh. The chair will know, the chair will know, and the school building committee should get the information first. So I, I will leave that up to the chair to make that decision.
Yes.
Um, so, so basically where we are right now, what lies ahead, this Friday we get our electrical bids. Next Wednesday night, the school building committee will be able to understand what the full picture is and determine what the impact will be. And be able to make a recommendation to the select board about this is what the committee votes. On Monday, October second, we have a joint meeting with this board, our select board. To determine what the final number will look like and what the request on the warrant will look like for a town meeting. Town meeting will happen on October twenty fourth, Tuesday night. The day after, Tuesday the third, I will be working with our printer to make sure that we have. Billfold ready to go, a mailer ready to go for that Friday. So, uh, stay tuned, it's not nearly as bleak as I'm hearing out there. Um, and potentially it could be some good news, hopefully come in this Friday, so, so that's where we are right now, those are the facts.
Will you send a mailer out electronically also?
Oh yeah, it'll be social media everywhere. Yep.
But just to finish my thought, three hundred and forty eight hundred million dollars additional money has been approved. For the thirty projects in the state of Massachusetts that are currently going on, so it's. But, um, teaching and learning.
Well, I just wanna show these two pictures, Mr. Chair, this is just a, a nice drone picture from uh left field, uh, how many, uh. One of our project executives from left field took this drone picture, kinda shows the site as of right now. The last step when the finishing touches on the base for the canopy. Uh, the gym is fully erected, the elevator shaft is fully erected, if you go to the next slide. That's kind of a cool aerial shot directly over the footprint of the school, you can see the foundation and all the footings are poured at this point, so. Steel arrives tomorrow, uh, steel begins to go up, uh, is really is Monday and next week. I believe that the steel team is mobilizing the end of this week to have their equipment here, so, um, I think one of the things that I, I hear regularly is. You're gonna be surprised how fast when these beams go up, so, uh, so I'm looking forward to that, and I hope there won't be too much of a distraction for the kids. In the next couple of weeks, we will be getting, um, a beam for the middle school students to all go out during lunch and sign. For a topping law ceremony, which will happen sometime in November, so, that'd be kinda cool, so, um, so it's going, that's where we are.
Awesome, thank you for the update. Uh, Mister Woodlock is unable to, uh, make it here this evening, so his teaching and learning update will be moved to our next event meeting. Nine B breakfast implementation across the district.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, so, uh, just some raw numbers from our first week of serving. Um, down in the bottom, uh, the Tracy DeMere is our food service director, did some breakfast surveys to parents. Just to get an idea of what the number may look like, uh, when we rolled it out on the eleventh. Um, it was not a requirement to fill out the survey to have breakfast, which confused some of the students. But, um, you can see what the breakfast counts were at each school. You know, word of mouth traveled quickly, so you can see we started. The middle school at twenty nine the first day and by Friday we're up to a hundred and six. So a nice steady climb on the breakfast, I'm sure as we get to options, you may see some, some peaks and valleys. Um, as the weeks go on, but that was a total for the week of eighteen hundred ninety three breakfasts that were served to, um. The Tingsboro kids, but, which I think is great. Um, that also equates to about thirty seven percent of our lunch participants, so. Look forward to see how the program goes onto week two, I did ask Tracy to give me a weekly update as we start, um. Start rolling out as a regular routine for breakfast. And, um, we will continue breakfast on early release day, so there'll be breakfast for the kids on tomorrow.
And operationally, I think it's going very well at all three schools, I haven't heard any complaints at all, so it seems like it's, it was pretty seamless, so I'd like to thank Mr. Messina for coordinating that.
And we gotta, you know, the, the, uh, kitchen staff was very good about it, you know, certainly here, uh. Calling kids as they're walking down the hall, come have breakfast, you know, come, you know, kids were like. Is it free, what, it's no cost, and they'd jump in.
It's like Family Park, we're hawking.
Even at the elementary, even at the elementary school where. Kids went to their classroom with their bag of breakfast and they'd bring other kids down, because the kids didn't know as they were coming in, so. They're announcing it at every school each day and it's getting into newsletters to. Remind parents and students that we have it and, um, look forward to it being a great program this year.
The high school numbers look very low. That's.
They're probably not there yet. And they might not be there yet.
They're not the bus, you know, the bus, the bus riders come in and they go and grab it, the, the kids that are driving are usually running in the door. With their coffee in hand, you know, just before the bell to start classes, so. But I was pleased with forty the first day and even more pleased that it grew as the, uh, as the week went on.
Thank you, Mister Messina, and we're gonna actually stay with you.
Yes.
For finance.
So for signing of bills, uh, seven warrants were presented to the school committee tonight, I have them all back signed. In your drive as always is the list of warrant numbers, accounts and amounts. Uh, no signing of payroll tonight, we will do that catch up at your next meeting and that is it for finance.
Thank you, school committee discussion.
Nothing at this time.
Just, uh, thank you to our middle school students for joining us tonight, they did really good job and it was good to hear how, how things were going and. How they survived the heatwave that first week of school and, you know, hopefully at this point, we're gonna see some, some fall weather come through and we'll be putting that in the rearview. But another good reason to have a new middle school.
Also, thanks to the middle school students, it was a great presentation, um, always love hearing from the students and, uh, congratulations to our students of the month. Barry, congratulations.
Echo, same thing, uh, you know, you continue being impressed every single year with the kids coming in, they always do a fabulous job. Uh, can't wait to see the elementary school, uh, next time. But, uh, yeah, that's it.
Like to thank the middle school kids for coming in and congratulations, Barry, and it's great to see everyone's getting back into the swing of things.
Congratulations, Barry. I, I think we should have made you give a speech, but. That's okay, maybe next time, um, thank you, Mister Paul, Mister Slattery and TMS students, um, did a great job, I, I loved their honesty. Especially with regards to the heat wave, we're not shy at all, which I really appreciated, so thank you, everybody.
Uh, just two comments, one, uh, one of my favorite comments tonight was, uh, what are you gonna miss most about eighth grade, our teachers. So thank you to the middle school teachers for, for creating that kind of atmosphere and environment with their students, the other comment that I heard tonight, which I think is critical. Was by you, Mister Chair, come to the meetings, if you have questions about the building project, you want the information, come to the meetings, watch the meetings. Email me, we'll get you the information, we'll get you the accurate information, um. There's a lot of information out there and, uh, please avail yourself to it and, and be familiar with it as we go to make an informed decision on. Uh, October twenty fourth, thank you.
Thank you, also, congratulations, Barry. Uh, thank you to the middle school, um, for coming out this evening, always. Um, the highlights of our, our years as members of this committee is to see the kids come in and reminds us why we do what we do and. Um, to the teachers and the staff who produce these kids, thank you to all of them. So, uh, we do not have a need this evening for executive sessions.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Any discussion, all those in favor? Okay, thank you and have a good night.